Of that moving forward. Going back to the capital project, we were trying to secure voting machines. And we didn't think we were going to be able to. When we thought about this project, we didn't think about a national election being two weeks later. But Lisa, thank you for all the work that you did on this, she was able to strong arm them into giving us one machine that day. So that we can get them now it's counted. And the importance of that is if we had to do it on paper, we could have, we could have had a lockbox. It just would have been, the counting would have taken a lot longer. So Lisa, thank you for getting that together. So we have secured the one machine. I'd like to thank the assistant principals for the work that they've done on the code of conduct. It's, there aren't many changes. There were a couple little word wordings that were caught over the course of the year. And so that plan was in your update for adoption tonight. The safety plan, we have, we worked on that prior to me going away at the beginning of the month. And I just needed to get it reviewed to make sure that we were not, this is the plan that's public. So we wanted to make sure there was nothing in there that divulged confidentiality and there isn't. So that came back from legal mid-July. So we've had that up for its mandatory thirty day public hearing or public comment session. So that went up on the twenty second, so we'll be able to adopt that on the twenty third. Bill, I'd like to echo that that's probably the first time that that's been adopted in the summer and not in the fall. So I'm feeling good about that. The last meeting, we talked about kindergarten numbers and I know I put this in my Friday update, but for the public and anyone that's here. We are running a smaller kindergarten than normal. So we, with the one resignation on the agenda this evening, we were able to make some changes in personnel. And we were able to move down to five sections. That's still, the numbers are still a little small, but I feel that we need to have that space in case folks show up. We don't want to be in a spot where we're at four and then all of a sudden the class sizes are twenty-five or twenty-six. So, so we're gonna start with the five sections. This past Friday, five of the administrative team attended the Mid Hudson School Study Council Law Conference. And that was, it's always a highlight of the summer when we get some of the legal updates. Oh, this week, we will be blasting social media with the changes in school lunch. Because many folks are not aware that school lunch is no longer just universally available for no charge. And really encouraging parents to fill out those forms. So we will have it on on social media. I had Bosie's type up something that gave all the links to forms. And I will send out a robo email probably tomorrow. I think the draft came to my email box late this afternoon. So I'll review that with John and we will get that out tomorrow. A board question came up over the week about building use. So just so that the community is aware, we have been approving groups to use the buildings. And then through that conversation, we thought, well, maybe some folks were not aware of the process. So if anyone does reach out and says that they would like to use the buildings, please encourage them to go on to the website and go to the school dude website to get started. And if they have any questions, they can call any of the buildings or my office and somebody can walk them through the process. But we don't want folks to think that they, the buildings are closed down. They are not. And we have no plans on closing them down unless something happens in the state. And right now, there's nothing on the radar for that. On Friday, I will be sending in my update two school board conferences if anyone's interested. The first one is the the annual convention and there's also a school law seminar. So if anyone wants to attend that, this will be in your Friday update. Also, for board officers, there's an academy on September sixteenth, which is virtual. The twenty-third of September in Rochester, or the thirtieth of Long Island. And again, that's in, will be in your Friday update. I think I'm done. Unless you have questions.
I want to go backwards on two things here. To incentivize looking for a position as in possibly with this kind of position. I think it's dangerous ground going there. Not in the situation that created that void, but we've lost probably several teachers this year to other districts for more money. And so, you know, we got, we had to think about that. We want to keep every year losing more and more people for those reasons.
Are we losing them through that transferring to another district? Or are we approving them early on in the, in the summer and then they secure another position with a higher salary?
I think we've lost current teachers, we've lost current teachers of the districts. We've also lost candidates that we fired earlier on in the year that are chasing out of the district, going other places. So it's tough to compete with that. I don't know how, we, we have to think about how we're gonna address that for have a little bit better retention. And it's tough when you start incentivizing something, bring somebody here. Because you're saying you're willing to ultimately spend the money to get somebody here, that extra money. I might have kept somebody, not that that's the case with that particular position we're talking about.
Oh, right. No, it's, listen, you don't have the opportunity unless the candidate who's applying elsewhere comes and says, Mr. Freer, I really love Highland, but I got a basic economic problem here. You know, I live closer to Rhinebeck and they're actually posting the same position at five thousand dollars high.
Worse, if you go to Monroeb.
Very rarely do you have the opportunity to maneuver, but.
It really is the only time that you can make some.
That's the only time.
One of my questions, and we might already do it, but to Patrick, do we do exit interviews? To understand really what is the main driver behind it? I mean, it might be somebody getting more money, but it might be someone that, you know, is closer to home, like you said, Mike. And maybe the two of them, you're never going to kind of overcome, right? But if it's strictly money, then we can start to understand that a little bit.
Usually when, like if we have a current staff member that's going somewhere else, they've had a conversation with the building principal or the supervisor that says, hey, just let you know I'm applying to somebody's other district. Because it's, you know, I'm driving fifty minutes and there's a district that's ten minutes from my house. And or sometimes it is money. So usually there's those conversations with the supervisor that says, you know. And in any of those conversations, you know, nothing's coming out that's, you know, detrimental that I don't think we're reflecting on. A lot of times it is location or money.
And we, we saw a lot with location, just with the gas prices.
Correct. I mean, it gives.
Yeah. Yeah.
It might just be something to consider because sometimes just have an independent person that you don't work with all the time doing an exit interview. Sometimes we'll bring out other things as well. This might be something to consider, that's all.
We struck with middle school, middle school foreign language position for a couple of years now. That's all. We're just, you know.
Right. Yes.
But we, I mean, the only incentive there is if, if we do have a candidate is to bump them up in step. I mean, just to, to keep them on board with all the way they're gonna jump ship.
Yeah.
And that's like, getting back to your question, Tom, I think the only other avenue we have is through negotiation. And we're starting HTA now, but I, I, I think that progression of salary increase is gonna take a while before we even get close to surrounding districts.
It's just in those hot zones. Smell our certification.
We are surrounded by dysentery.
It's just, it's just the way, you know, the way we are. We can't make that.
No, we have a doubt, but I, I just think it's, it's, it's tough. It's a tough area to go to when you start incentivizing that way. Maybe it's, like you said, a step, maybe two steps.
Well, that's always the problem with superintendent.
I just want, I want to know, he's got some latitude here. At least I support that.
Well, I know in those, in those high need positions, obviously we may have to do that. But when you're in a collective bargaining agreement, you cannot offer money to retain somebody outside of the scope of a negotiated deal.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be a front.
Yeah.
But, you know, same thing with those with administration.
Point well taken.
And distributors.
Level pause here, another issue. You mentioned the smaller kindergarten class. So even with the, the one class going away, there's, the numbers will still be a little smaller or significantly.
Well, right now they are, but you know, just as my, my experience at the elementary school is, you know, we always get a, a, a cluster of students closer to the day that we begin.
Right. If the number stays small, I would love.
So then we're around seventeen.
Okay. I was gonna say, if the numbers do remain small and this becomes a class that is going to be smaller as it progresses through, I would love for our data analyst to, to set up a series of, of means of testing this particular group if it remains small. So that we can get some real feedback as to what kind of influence the class size has on the students and their instruction that we might be able to utilize in the future.
Because we have reduced a section, I don't think we're gonna be that abnormal with the size of the students that are in the particular classroom moving forward. But we've done this before where one class might be a little bit smaller. Kindergarten, we usually not, we usually don't touch because you never know what you're gonna get at the end of the summer. But this is historically low right now. When they go to first grade, that's typically when we would take a section away. Or when they go to second grade, we would take a section away. And then that, we call it an underbubbles. It's an under amount of students and that rides through. And teachers shift from different classrooms throughout the year till they get to, you know, the end of the elementary school. And then we add the teacher back in at the bottom. So we look at that every year.
No, we just, if we happen to have a data anomaly, I would love to study it and see what kind of, what, what effect it would have on our education.
We do have a few other smaller classes overall, right? One in the middle school, maybe one.
Actually.
Senior class, yeah. Senior class is pretty small.
Yeah, small.
Yes. And so I remember when that went through the elementary school, I can't remember how long ago I was there. I know I had another one that is one section less too. That might be.
Yeah, there's one in middle school more, or maybe they're just like in primary school.
No, there's an eight one at the elementary school that was, we used to have thirty-six sections, so it was six at each grade level. So we're down to thirty-four now. So.
Second question.
Yes, sir.
Um, going back, going forward to Monday night, football, is that being sponsored by a booster club?
The booster club.
So have we been approached by a soccer that wanna do similar things?
I haven't. Have you?
No. I mean, I, I don't want this to get known just as a football field. And I'll tell you still that we're gonna need support also from soccer and lacrosse parents. And, and track, track also, because we'll be upgrading the track.
Right.
And other facilities within that.
We're still working on our product, right? We don't like have a brochure for this capital project yet. We don't have anything to.
Not.
But I don't want to.
But I'm told I will have, I will have something to hand out to folks on Monday. And I will have the preliminary poster board on Monday for that, for that location.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, that's, that's a shared facility and they should all get equal, equal time, equal billing and.
I believe, uh, Gene, you know, I'm gonna get to that now.
Yeah. So I mean, this is, it's not being termed the football field. I think the football booster club is the one that's taking the most active, you know, is taking the most active approach to try to do stuff.
Well, that's true, yeah. I agree.
I could speak about this because I'm part of the booster club. I'm one of the founding directors. And we are doing fundraisers. We've been doing fundraisers since the beginning of the year. I know the La, the lacrosse booster has been up much longer than, than the football booster club. And I know that there's an active group of parents who are doing things. I don't know if they're going to do other things. I also was approached by a parent who's interested in starting a soccer booster club also. So I think we're going to see more of this and I think it's going to just help with what we're trying to do.
But you also.
If, no, that's, I can't, I can't do both. I'm doing things or whatever I'm doing. Yeah, no.
There's plenty of people who are active, but you're right.
But I want, I want to see those groups step up also and, you know, stake their claim too.
We're gonna do like. We, we should do like a athletic field or athletic facility summit at some point. And maybe have all these groups kinda go there and there could be some walking tours. But we're still trying to get a product to put in people's hands.
No, and.
But, but I think Monday is strictly the football booster club having a family get together for the football team.
Yeah, that's all I.
It's not, has nothing to do with promotion.
No, no, we understand that, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I'm capitalized on it because it happens to be happening.
Right. We have to take advantage of these ideas. These are all opportunities. So.
The football booster club, along with the coaches, we will, we feel that it's important to make sure that we start a strong foundation. So we have been doing lots of work with the youth football organization. And we're like coming together to hopefully have more than just this year, but have like an annual football family kickoff, no pun intended, for like the season and everything else. So that was something. And then obviously it's.
The, the great thing they've done on Friday nights is when they trot out the, the little guys and girls, you know, let them run out onto the field, center of the field. I mean, it's that right there, you know, it's huge. And that was a great program to start to do that.
And I'd like to see that every week at every game.
Yeah.
If possible.
It would be great if you could do it for the other, like the other sports too. There's, there's youth lacrosse, there's youth soccer.
Yep.
There's all of that stuff to support this all the way up. And that's young families.
We're creating farming, we're creating a farming opportunities, we're bringing the I F.
Tom, exactly what you're saying, and that's what I've been, I might call it preaching for the last couple of years, that the varsity level coaches have to buy into the program and get the feeder program, which could be modified or JV, if there is a JV program, to develop that type of, of, of a gathering or whatever you wanna call it, to, to build their program. I mean, football, I think based on their coach getting some parents involved, got that going. And they organized and they went through the IRS and got the proper, you know, certification or anything. But I, I think Pete had a question. Did you have a question, Pete?
There will be a soccer field painted on the field on Monday night.
Okay.
Just to let you know.
Man, I have a question for Frank. Frank, a few years back, I don't know if it's still functional, but there was a varsity letter club or varsity something club that collected funds. It was like an account.
We still have varsity letter club. It's an avenue where some teams can put their money into. Wrestling takes advantage of that. Our soccer programs take advantage of that. Our softball team takes advantage of that. We have, baseball has their own club, as does cheerleading. And that's goes through, there's nothing to do with athletics. That's a club that's after school. They're supposed to meet once a month. They have a president, treasurer, you know, from the kids.
Right. I thought those programs are out.
Yeah, but we do have an account that's the Highland Varsity Letter Club, which some programs take advantage of.
I think, I think every sport at varsity level is represented, just that they might not be as active as, say, the football.
No, of course. And, you know, if anything, people should start asking why they don't. Try to form that group and reinforce that.
That's how, that's how ironically a parent came to me as like, you are Mrs. Soccer and you don't have a soccer booster club? And I was like, well, we could start this, but like I need more help. You know, there needs to be other people to step up to do those kinds of things.
There's plenty of people to contact. We need the media kit to do it. So I don't just wanna tell you about it as a parent or tell you, I wanna give you a stack of brochures with a lot of pictures and less words that highlight Prop One, really highlight Prop Two. And to give these to your parents, you're gonna hear more about it. And I'll bring something up under old business that I think can help. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for superintendent? All right. Thanks, Joel. Board of Education, new business. Targeted school improvement plans for elementary and middle school. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent. Approve the targeted school improvement plans for the elementary school and middle school, as well as the district comprehensive improvement plan as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Heather. Any discussion?
Just thank you for all your hard work.
And just, um, just like I said, just wanting to see more, um, some new strategies that are focused on our subgroups. So, I mean, the TSI is designed as we have subgroups formed at a low level. So just, I think there'll be improvements for all, but, you know, leaving a lot, I just wanna see a little more targeted for those groups. And I brought it up a few times since I've been on board and I've released them then.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Aye. Pose. One abstention. Six, zero, with one abstention.
I'm an A, I'm an A.
Oh, you're an A. Oh, I'm sorry. An A. Six, one. Okay. Code of Conduct Policy for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent. Approve the attached Code of Conduct Policy for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Camille. Discussion?
Does this get shared with all parents after we approve it or ahead of school beginning or around there?
It is made available on the website. Anyone who wants it, we used to make photoc, we used to make copies of them. And we would find many of them in the garbage. So now it is available. The offices will have some copies of it. And then, you know, if parents want a copy, then they could either, they could print it or they could let us know and we will get them a printed copy.
Right. So there's no like district-wide email where that's a link or something like that, or could it be?
Yeah, it's out in the.
I, I'll only say in some, in my, in, in some of my experiences that have not been very positive, the I, the question of how did this student or parent, how did you attempt to get this to them? And the electronic piece usually satisfies.
I could, I could include that in a, in my summer, in my summer update email.
Yes. Yes. The board has approved our updated school code of conduct. If you'd like to see that, click here and that can be a real statement.
I could do that with the TSI and the DCF as well. I could put those in there with maybe a blurb about why we have those and. You know.
That's up to you. I've got questions about those. I understand the way Camille voted, you know. As we move forward in the year, I think I'm gonna have some real specific questions on how, why, you know, upfront it looks like they all need to, staff development, teachers gonna do this. I think our approach and one of the things that we've talked about, not to get off topic, but just sharing my thoughts since I have the floor, was how does this student or family feel that there's a difference in their education based upon this plan? I have a reverse look, but we'll get into that. So thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. Okay.
Old business. Yeah, I, I just have one item. I, I, I think that we do need to do more, especially if this option two is gonna have a chance. Option one, we're gonna, I think the community's kind of in tune with the fact that that's kind of a zero impact to their, their budget, our budget, and it sits. But Proposition Two is pretty significant and I'm concerned with the lack of progress on stuff. I need a brochure to give to people. I need lots of them. And electronic form, paper form. So I'm also gonna ask that we craft a press release to our three or four local papers. Times, Kingston Freeman, Poughkeepsie Journal, and the Record, Real Town Record. Reason being, because a lot of folks read those publications and remind our own residents, hey, I heard you, you're doing a field? What are you talking about? I didn't read that. You know, it kinda just helps all of us to communicate. So if we could have a press release drafted that we share with them, that would be great. And I'd like to see that press release in the next two weeks.
It's coming.
Okay.
It's part of the, it's part of the whole plan. You know, the first thing was the, getting the postcard and the website. And Holly is, she just did the slideshow tonight. The video is next week. And the posters are this week. I should have them this week.
Okay.
So.
It is the, I mean, I don't have to remind Holly, but it is the second week of August.
Yep.
And July was, it's coming. And August is, here they are. That's what I'm, you know.
A lot of our, a lot of our local newspapers, like the local newspapers, we used to give them.
But they're still part of the, they're still part of the communication.
That's why you issue a press release and don't let them, you know, a reporter might call and try to do, they might. More publicity is great, but the reason you craft a press release is because it is in.
They're not, they don't string it anymore.
If you have a, they're gonna just drop the page.
We're not denying that. There's more national stuff and it's, it's just photoshopped in there. You know, the, the big newspaper chains have taken over and your local part of these papers, whoever that, you know, this article would end up. It's almost nonexistent or maybe one or two pages now. It's all national stuff. Sports pages, Poughkeepsie Journal, most of this stuff is South of eighty-four. Good coverage.
I'm reading about other capital projects in the region. No, they'll drop it in if, if, like Mike's saying, if we craft it. Because what happened when that came through? I hear ya. That, that. Get against their publication needs allocation. You're on their subscription sites and that's available on their social media pages. Like, you know, it's the second week of August and I don't feel like we're any close. I know a lot of things are coming, but so is October.
I think we'll, we'll put a little spark under CSRH to move that process along.
It sounds like.
I, I know some of the, I know so, I, I know you do, but I know some of the architectural design firms claim that they're so busy, but yet, you know, they, they just move at their own pace. So I think we have to put a little fire on their, under their, uh, urine and get some action going. Don't forget, I always believe this, that we're paying the freight, so.
That's why we, that's why we also insisted a lot of times on our support service meetings.
With that being said, Tom, I, we gotta, we gotta resurrect another meeting, deal soon with support service so we can stay on task with getting CSRH to move in the direction that we want them to move in. Like Mike said, Joel knows it, October eighteenth is too much away.
We, we paid the freight. We should be able to get there some time when a meeting happens.
Is there, is there anything contractual that says that the little meals items that we can get in writing that they can, I don't think, through that timeline? That to that, and maybe get, to like we want these certain things, but they told us that we could deliver it back in the spring.
I think we'll put the support service back in action and we, we give them a timeline to, to follow. CSRH to get these things in a timely manner to Joel's and get them, get them out. That's gonna be, you know, a push.
Again, we're, we're, everything is late as of today. There is no timely manner. They missed every deadline. So are our own people. Christ. We got parents getting together, calling us left and right, and we just need stuff to give to them. And it's all late.
That being said, I think even right now, the next two weeks will be shouting the wind. The real landing zone is September when school starts. We have to come out in full force. So if we can, we have this time to prepare and then when school begins, if we can come out with a strong message, a clear, a clear message.
Thank you. I just got.
I want to be ready before that though.
No, we should be ready. But I'm saying that's, that's pretty much the opening gate right there. It's, I think everybody's back from vacation. Families are ready to.
I still wanna hear timely manner. Tell them they're all late.
But the efforts of the administration, I appreciate it greatly. I know they're there.
All right.
Uh, just, um, with the support services, is it possible to have like just some talking points that be crafted? So that way, if we're gonna help, you know, help superintendent.
I think we can.
So that we're all saying the same thing and.
It's not like we don't have anything on our lips. It's just, I'll tell you what. Prop one has eighty-five percent of the information.
Yeah, and Prop two is just.
And that's not where the effort's gonna, you know, there's an effort. I'm not taking anything for granted. But the heavy lift is Prop two, for those of us trying to lift it.
But I think.
No, true. I mean, Prop one is there's no impact. Prop two is an impacted factor. So they gotta really understand.
I think in our, in our discussion, it's designed. I see what's gonna be designed. And I think what Joel mentioned about the coming in and creating a video, reading the, all this image, I, that's where it's gonna be later.
Very well taken though. I, I, it's, I'm not happy that this stuff isn't here either.
This isn't Joel. This is our contractors, rest people.
I mean, this is, this is every Friday when I sit down to write my Friday update, I'm like, we have nothing more. You know, when I go to do the Friday update this week and I'm out for the three days at this superintendent's thing, you know, I, I could send emails, I could make phone calls, but it's, you know.
Sometimes give you a.
Your marketing people know, text doesn't sell this.
Did they tell you what their turnaround time's gonna be after they come in film this year on Monday?
Timely manner.
I'm getting that from so many contractors.
Holly is, Holly is writing that script because I want it to be very similar to what Walk Hill did because it was so comprehensive. They're doing the filming and she's gonna do the editing. So, um, we should have that by the beginning of September.
Kiono reads?
If Kiono Reed can put a TikTok out, every. Oh, if Keanu Reeves can put a TikTok out every four days, we gotta be able to do something.
Can we get Keanu Reeves?
I'll take you on a TikTok talking about the capital project, if, you know.
Alright, well, we gotta shout.
I'll speak to my son regardless of Walkhill, what they did to push that thing along, because he's involved in that one.
I know that Walkhill did all the video through Bosse's. There were some pieces of it that were not as say, clean as they could have been with more professionalized.
Oh, yeah, they got the message across too.
They got the message across and it passed. So I don't want to put down what was there. I just, I liked that the, I liked the, the flow of it. And I liked that it had um folks that people knew and trusted in those talking point pieces. So um, that's the point. That's the part that I want to replicate. Um. Yeah.
If the Margulio brothers have a quote in there supporting proposition two.
If you could uh get them, that would be great.
They won't support proposition two.
But, but we. They might not support.
Probably a family of small.
We miss you. If you're here launching this on the future. So thank you, we incorporate those videos, uh, families with young children who are just coming to the district.
And that's the, that's the campaign piece that I think was, and I mentioned this before, that was the piece that was missing at the Red Hook District. That they did not capitalize on those young families because it was, it was a secondary, it, that's what they viewed it as a secondary project. Yeah, that's great, but those elementary kids are gonna be at the secondary school at some point. So that was the biggest takeaway that I got from uh, that superintendent when I met with her about things that we could do differently. So there are things in the works of getting as many young children up to this field in the next.
Yeah, we're trying to show a vision of the Highland of the future. That's what we need to.
Ten weeks. Um, and then you know, having that video playing in the lobby of each school on back to school night, that's important. That has to be there. There's, there could be no, that, we can't, we can't miss that opportunity.
Yes, that's cool.
Um, me being at each one of those schools during those back to school nights to be able to answer a question is important. So those are all they're in the works. And then the public, public forum, I believe we have scheduled for the twenty-seventh of September because we wanted it close enough to the um project, but not the meeting before in case there were concerns that we would have an extra meeting to um basically have another one to answer any questions that came out en masse uh during that twenty-seventh, uh, I think it's the twenty-seventh of uh September forum. So. We have all the, we don't have the cost breakdowns there. Everything's gonna be in there.
We're not weighing on one side or the other as long as we can present our vision, but we have to show the cost of the vision. And if we show that, then we're.
Correct. Correct. Yep. Um, and then Bernie Donegan's office will be here on the twenty-seventh as well. Um, to just make sure that they're giving the information. We're gonna give it correctly in advance of that, but that we have our financial advisors here to make it very um, like an exclamation point on what it is that it's actually going to, to cost. So we wanted those folks here so that if there were questions, they could answer them from a financial point. So those have all been set up.
Good, good. Sure. Frank, uh, fall sports, um, is there any surprises here? Do we have enough uh players for all the teams?
No, that was one of the things that I had an opportunity I would speak about, but I can do that now. Uh, JV girls soccer will not happen. We, we just don't have enough. Our varsity soccer is, we still need some players. So we're, we're close there with varsity. We should be okay. Uh, JV will not happen. We still have enough.
Still have my modified.
Modified um, signups opened up. Yeah, I knew it was yesterday, today. Um, yesterday, so we'll, no, we should have enough for that. Our JV boys soccer numbers are kind of low also, but um, we may have enough. That's, you know, last year the varsity team that I coached, we had twenty-three kids on our roster. That's a lot for one team, but it's not enough for two teams.
Right.
So we're stuck in the middle. And that's kind of where the numbers are right now with the boys. Um, it's around twenty-two, twenty-three. You need to get to about twenty-eight or thirty.
You know, again, your senior class, remember, is the smallest, like one eighteen.
I get that.
Well, our numbers, our numbers for all the other sports in the fall are good to very good. Football numbers are very good. Um, girls tennis is very good. Our golf is good. Uh, cross country, you know. Volleyball, I mean, I believe right now volleyball were over thirty for varsity in January, which is really unheard of for Highland, you know.
Girls varsity numbers are what? Girls, girls varsity, how many now?
For soccer?
Yeah, soccer.
As of Friday, it was ten that were registered. But there was three or four others that played last year that are in, their intention is to play.
Bring all, all JV. Anybody who would qualify for JV is already on varsity, right?
And there are a couple um eighth graders that already took the APP, Advanced Placement Test, and they'll be on varsity. But, but we don't open that back up. That, that, that is over with because we're not looking to bring seventy, eight graders up to fill a roster.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Um, I know that was a question a couple of weeks ago to me, but that, that's done. We already did the testing.
You know, the feeder program for soccer, is that still up there running or that's trouble to look at?
Yeah, we, no, we still have it. So there's still, and that's, well, but I think a lot of those, a lot of, it's a, it's an oh-nine team. So that's an eighth, that's the eighth graders. And so my team is predominantly eighth and seventh graders. And so I do, I have eighteen girls on my roster. Some of them are pulled, I have one girl from Walkhill and I have three or four from New Paltz and the rest. So I do have twelve girls that are from Highland that are seventh and eighth grade level that are playing. And there is an, there is an in-house program and there's, there's a, I've, there's a littles girls team that they're thirteen, fourteen team that is building in that as well. So there should be more coming up. There is more conversation from the girl side to have another even younger team than that. Um, but you're talking, it's, th- these are the future that we're trying to build through like the athletic program. But there are three programs potentially coming up.
Will, will you reach out to other uh ADs and, you know, from other districts? Are they having similar issues, say with that, you know?
Well, Zell will not have a varsity girls soccer team this year. They don't have a JV. They, they never had a JV. Barbara doesn't have a JV boys soccer. Anybody at our size school, uh, most of them don't have both. We were the one, we were one of the last ones at our size to have, you know, full rosters all the way across the board. Our numbers in um tennis and, and volleyball were never higher than what they are right now. So just imagine if you had five or six less volleyball, five or six less tennis. They're probably playing soccer and then, you know, so the kids are still all participating, this all over.
Where they go, yeah.
You know, it's just, you know, it could be those random seniors, twelfth graders that all of a sudden the rug gets pulled out from under them, you know, team.
Volleyball is, is doing a lot though. They did a summer program, right?
They're coming off two very good seasons, very, very good seasons.
That bill.
Modified numbers have always been high there, so um.
We'll just wanna spike a bullet somebody.
Alright. Uh, anything else under old business? I just had a couple things. Um, just remember HSA committee, I believe it's Tom, Camille and Mike. Uh, HS, Camille and um HSA. So Camille is on the phone.
I'll plod my head. I'll know. I know I sent the stuff out.
Uh, try to get things together and move that forward. We're meeting each day, meeting tonight to kind of kick things off. Um, and just keep this on your radar. I thought about this a while ago. Um, to have a board retreat. We haven't had one in, in years. Um, just have a board retreat where we can sit down and kind of express our own feelings and uh, stay on the same page.
Sounds good.
It's just saying.
For the year. Yeah, we haven't done any of that in a while.
Just to confirm, I just say it's Camille, Mike and Tom.
Camille, Mike and Tom. Do you, do you have the time for that, Camille?
We'll see.
Okay. See you after tonight. Anybody else uh for old business or miscellaneous, good and welfare of the district? You good Frank? One more thing?
I got, I, I mean, I just want to let you know where we're at, because I know you guys are talking about the project also. And I know somebody mentioned football, fo- football field. Um, I, I do believe that it's gotta be branded as it's called F Meekins Athletic Field. You go out there right now, there's one sign that says football field and then the sign by the scoreboard says athletic field. So there is confusion there. Um, twenty-some years ago, it was just a football field, a track. It's not that case anymore. I mean, we host varsity, modified football games on that field. We host varsity uh soccer during the fall, boys and girls. And then the spring, we host lacrosse, boys and girls, as well as track and field um events. Plus practice for all of that. And really, you know, once the turf is there, it becomes a practice facility as long as the weather lets you do that, which we never had before. So to say it's just a football field, I don't know, but that is some confusion that is out there because people will always say it's the football field. You know, you play four games there. I mean, you have, you know, sixteen lacrosse games and sixteen soccer games on that field. So it's, it's a, it's an athletic field. Um.
And modified spring sports played up there as well this year, correct?
They had um.
Modified boys and girls labs played up there this year as well.
Yeah, we, towards the end of the year, if it's, if that field is lined and there's issues down there, we, we bust them up here together. So we've done that in the past.
So it is an athletic facility and that's how it should be presented to the community.
That's how it, that's how, in all the documents, that's what it's, it's leveled.
No, no, I get that, but this, that's what's on paper. And somehow it's gotta be even more because people continue to think, we have four football games. That's it.
Maybe a, a conversation at some point in time that we, we.
Is it maybe?
Yeah.
You know, whatever arena you'd actually have to close sports conference. You know, I think I got Roman Kalsian on the line over there. Thank you again. Keep me on track.
Now, going back to the boosters and, and um clubs. Correct me if, the booster club that you guys, it's big blue.
Highland big blue football.
And that is, that is, it's you.
It's me.
Right. So it's want everybody to know, that's nothing to do with the athletics department. Um, I never talked to you personally about it, but I did speak to other members. I just want the board to know, you know, it's not there to supplement uniforms or helmets or equipment. The school district will continue to take care of that. I mean, I think we've done a really good job since two thousand fourteen with being able to use the funds that were given to athletic director to get the equipment that we need, anything above and beyond. And it's the same thing with the others. If soccer goes out and raises money, they're getting sweatsuits or they're getting themselves cleats or something like that. They're not getting, you know, a Highland uniform that way.
All the supplemental equipment kids need to play.
Possibly, yes. But not, not school, you know, we're gonna continue to do what we're doing um as far as that kind of equipment, you know.
The boosters to help support that and to support the coaches if there's outside things that they're looking for.
That they're looking to do that the budget might not support.
I, I mean, like the booster club purchased a camera or so that is something that has been ordered and it's gonna be here that'll have, you know, to be able to be used, so.
Um. The you know, ten, fifteen years ago, whatever, you had Highland Little League. Now it's, it's, it's Babe Ruth, Babe Ruth. The Highland United Soccer Club isn't really the Highland United Soccer Club now. It's Quick Strike. There is a group of parents that are looking to do something through the town to get soccer at the young age um going again. Not to say it's not there, but you want to get more people involved.
Yeah, it's been part of them.
So there are more things going on. Our, I, I believe the lacrosse club is very strong. Um, now football's gonna be very strong. Um, you know, and the people in charge of the Babe Ruth now, Cal Ripken, Babe Ruth, whatever you wanna call him for baseball and softball, they have a lot more energy than what was there three or four years ago. And you'll see that as time goes on, you know, hopefully on the field.
These groups are doing very well regionally in their own contests, so it's very exciting.
And also on the twenty-fourth, we are hosting a boys and girls varsity soccer scrimmage. Um, so Joel, if you want, you can give me, if you have information at that time. Um, I have a trainer tent there, so maybe I'll take care of it, put a table there with some information. Um.
Yes, Frank, thank you. That's the kind of stuff.
That'd be three weeks, whatever, whatever it is.
Every one of those events, we need to have.
Three weeks.
Three, that's, that's two weeks closer to October eighteenth.
Boom, dynamite.
Well, and every Saturday, I'm at, I'm at the um, Tannodown Fields for Quick Strike and there are lots of young children and parents there. So if there's anything that I could have there as well to have, I mean, that's something to think about also.
And these things are on the schedule.
Yeah, I think that's something the support service will try to put together. And like I said, maybe teams of two can go down there on a Saturday for a couple hours with a pop-up. I think Frank got pop-ups. Um, and kind of promote, you know.
I appreciate any help.
Yeah. Like Mike said, I, Prop Two is the one that really needs to push. Alright, enough said, I guess. Uh, anything else for miscellaneous? Uh, we'll, the meeting up to public comment. No public comment? Can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Tom, second by Camille. All favor?
Aye.
Pose.
I would tell me to pose to adjourn.
Yeah. Got more to say.